Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the August 15th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here.
Commissioner Coman.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers. Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of requests, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes their request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve an item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on Items 5A, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one in the audience, we will now move on to Consent Calendar Non-Public-Hearing Items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public-Hearing Item for separate consideration?
Yes.
Commissioner Coman.
I'd like to have Items 4B through D removed for discussion, please. And we can put them all together as far as, because I think that the questions are all the same for all three of them.
Okay. Items 4B through 4D. Are there any other items that commissioners wish to move from the Consent Calendar Non-Public-Hearing portion of the agenda? Seeing no other commissioners, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on Consent Calendar Non-Public-Hearing Item 4A and moving Items 4B, C, and D to the public hearing portion of the agenda?
No, they're not public hearings, but we'll discuss them next.
Oh, we will discuss them next.
Yeah.
This doesn't happen usually. Bear with me. So we would just discuss them before we make the motion, or do we?
Do the motion on the minutes, and then we'll discuss 4A, or 4...
B.
B through D after that motion, and we could do those all as one motion, depending on the commission's, what they want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve Item 4A, minutes from the August 1st, 2019 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Coman. May I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Wade. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion approved.
All right. Moving on to discussion about Item 4B, C, and D. Mr. Coyle, will you please provide us some additional information?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I have one report for all three projects because they are very similar, as Commissioner Coman noted. This is a planning director's report to inform your commission that a request by Walmart to install solar panels has been administratively approved. The municipal code allows the planning director to administratively approve minor changes, modifications, alterations, deviations, or substitutions, provided the changes do not substantially change the project that was previously approved. As proposed, Walmart will install solar canopies over several rows of parking, as reflected in your staff report and the resolution. Solar panels will also be placed on the roof, but not visible to the general public. All power generated by the panels will remain on-site and be used to offset the use of fossil fuel, reduce pollution, and greenhouse gas emissions. Portions of the existing landscaping will be removed. However, the applicant proposes additional shade trees to ensure all uncovered parking spaces and drive aisles maintain at least 40% shade coverage. There will be no impact to the number of parking spaces. Staff concludes the proposed physical changes are minor in nature and in substantial conformance with the originally approved design. As required by the municipal code, the purpose of this report is to inform your commission of this determination, and it is staff's recommendation that your commission accept this report and receive and file for the record. I should also note that it is the policy of the state to promote and encourage the use of solar energy systems and to limit obstacles to their use. Pursuant to California Government Code Section 65850.5, it is the intent of the legislature that local agencies not adopt ordinances that create unreasonable barriers to the installation of solar energy systems, including but not limited to, design review for aesthetic purposes and not unreasonably restrict the ability of business concerns to install solar energy systems. This concludes our staff report for Items 4B, 4C, and 4D.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Do we allow public to provide comments, or do we move just into?
It's not a public hearing, so just comment among the commissioners.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, any comments?
I don't have a button here to say amongst the...
Commissioner Coman.
Just for the record, this was a discussion that I had with, I think, Mr. Johnson, prior to me coming on the Planning Commission, so this has been a couple of years brewing. My biggest concern is, is that there's, well, there's two concerns. One is, I don't know that it really falls within the direction of the planning director, because I read through that, and I thought it referred to smaller items, but that's not really my problem. My problem is that we have, you know, architectural review guidelines and that kind of thing, and we build these really nice buildings, and then you can just randomly willy-nilly come along and put up these giant solar carports. And I get it that we want to try to, you know, lower our fossil footprint, or however you define it, but I'm just a little concerned that, you know, we get this everywhere, and there doesn't seem to be any limitation on where you put them, and the way it was told to me back when I first inquired about this is that, well, we don't have any say on that. And so I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about that.
What would you like to discuss specifically?
Well, my concern is, is that, you know, they do take up a lot of room, and they block the views of these buildings that we design, and there doesn't seem to be any restriction or anything, that we don't have any guideline in the city for dealing with those things. And they're all the same, and all of them everywhere are the same design. Is that a state-certified design, or what's the deal with those? Because they're all the same.
Right. I'm not entirely sure about the design. I do know that the panels have to be at a certain angle in order to maximize their exposure to solar. But the reason I read that last statement is that if...
To avoid my question.
Not to avoid it, but it's state law that says you can't really object based on aesthetics. And I think, I think the designer went to whatever lengths possible they could to make the color, paint compatible with the buildings and things of that nature.
Well, generally, they're not. Generally, they're unfinished metal, and that's their, you know, they're not painted. They're not colored.
These will be painted to match the exterior building.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
These canopies, the columns and the beams will be painted to match the exterior of the building, to minimize the aesthetics, maybe a negative purview of that. And that's also Walmart's preference anyways.
So what you're telling me is you just dropped my objection to and move on?
Well, I don't, you can have an objection, but I think our concern is that if we adopt or deny a project, that the state is telling us that we can't deny it for certain reasons, we expose ourselves to litigation, and we won't have a leg to stand on, because, so the state has been really firm with all of these solar laws. I mean, they've been cutting down how long we could take to review them, and they're really encouraging it and enticing businesses to install it. So I would agree with Mr. Coyle. There's really limited wiggle room for us on these things, but to the extent that we're getting compliance and coloring and things that will help and offset that visual blight, it's what we can hope for.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, just one follow-up question to that is, because I understand the design is a lot dictated by access and vehicle parking and people not hitting the posts when they open their car door and fire truck clearance. I am noticing throughout the document, the color is referred to as to be selected by the tenant. And is there, did I miss it in the document? Are your proposed colors in the package? And is that something that, as we see more of these proposals, we could at least know what color is being proposed?
We try to match as best as possible in our planning submittals, the colors to the exterior of the building, but really, it's going to come down to, you know, it's hard to do that in AutoCAD. It's going to be chosen more closely once we get to that point.
Well, I completely sympathize with how AutoCAD is not a perfect render, but it just, to me, the language of the proposal says that the tenant can kind of paint it whatever they decide, which isn't really giving the commission the same consistency of it matching the aesthetic of the building, and wondering if that is something the city, to speak to Commissioner Coman's comment of, you know, per tenant choice, that choice could be bright yellow, that choice could be hot pink, you know, that's not language that says consistency with the shopping center. And so, I mean, I don't think we need, I mean, for me, I'm not asking for the CAD drawing to look exactly like the color, but just, this is the color of the exterior building is, you know, muslin in September, and we're proposing to paint these muslin in September, you know, just so that there's a little bit more consistency in review.
I think that's a reasonable condition to put on this approval, that they would paint it in a color that closely matches the building.
Yeah, just because the way that's written now, I'm not sure if it's the brand color of the brand, and it's going to be a very distinctive eye-catching, or if it is really consistent with the building. And it sounds like the applicant intends to paint it consistent with the shopping center, which is, I would say, from an aesthetic standpoint, I would, I'm not speaking for all of us, but is kind of in the little bit of review that we can provide, and it's something that I think would be nice to know. So, yeah, so I don't know if that, if anything needs to amend with this to make that. It sounds like it's, it's just maybe not stated, but it's verbally stated, so if that's just...
Well, I mean, if the Planning Commission would be comfortable with that written as a condition, we can make that change, and I'm not hearing an objection from the applicant, so...
Do we need to have a first and a second and move on with that?
Yes.
Mr. Commissioner Coman, since you... Oh. All right. Can we have the minutes reflect that?
I'll make the motion that the framework or whatever is painted, that's available to be painted to be matching or quite similar to the building color. Is that...
And to approve Items 4B through D?
Yes, sorry, and to approve those three items.
Thank you, Commissioner Rudnick. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Motion passes with Commissioner Coman against...
Dana, can we see if IT can help us get this screen to work? Because I, since there is a mixed voter, there we go.
There it is.
I was just waiting for you to comment on it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it to move along.
The screen loves drama. It loves to wait a little bit. Commission. Ooh. It has also been brought to my attention that the commissioners have no speak buttons, making it difficult to assign speaking. Yeah. Is there someone here that can help?
I know they're listening.
Oh, thank you. I thought this took Commissioner Coman's away. Apparently, the chair has the power to silence all of you, so we are now, we are now back in a...
I don't have one.
I think we're good, right?
I don't have one.
You still don't have one?
You have your...
I kind of like the old-school button. It was just the little light up. Yeah. All right. So we are now moving on to Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The planning director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of items to be considered. If you would like to speak, please come forward after the item is read and ask that it be removed for discussion. Items not removed by a member of the public or a commissioner will be voted on in one motion without further comment. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda, and it is an item that I have a conflict due to Source of Income, so I will be handing it over to the very capable hands of Vice Chair Commissioner Coman. Thank you.
All righty then. Okay. So I guess, you know, the planning director, do please read the item.
Project 5A, Plan Development Review Number 19-0189, which is a proposal to approve development of a retail center in a C2 PCD zone at 8120 Hughes Lane. This concludes my reading of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. At this time, I will open all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items, which is one item, 5A. This item has been continued from the July 18th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony. It's just the time to pull it off for discussion. Seeing no one, is there any commissioner that would like to take an item off of the Consent Calendar?
We already did.
We already did? Okay. It says that...
It's still on the Consent Calendar. If you want to hear it, we can remove it.
It's for public discussion, yeah. Yeah. Sure. Okay.
I'll do it. Since you're the chairman, he wants it off, and I'll take it off.
That's a good assist.
Yeah.
I'm reading. I got catch-up here in my reading here. Okay, this time, the public hearing is on all...
So I would just move to the actual public hearing portion, since there's just one.
Let's go right to the public hearing part, then. All right, then. So do we get a more in-depth staff review, and we can go from there?
Yes, I will give a staff report.
Thank you.
This is a request to allow development of a retail center totaling approximately 122,500 square feet in the C2 PCD zone. The project is situated on 11 acres, generally located at 2603 Hosking Avenue, just west of the Hosking Avenue and Highway 99 interchange. As proposed, the center will be developed in three phases, consisting of six multi-tenant buildings totaling 68,500 square feet, an auto fuel station with convenience store, 4,000 square feet, a fast-food restaurant, 2,000 square feet, and a three-story, 110-room hotel, 48,000 square feet. The developer is providing 492 parking spaces where 450 spaces are required. The project has been designed in compliance with requirements of city standards and policies, and no deviations from zoning ordinance standards have been requested. Should the applicant decide to expand onsite development in the future, your commission will have the opportunity to review and comment under a separate review. No public comments have been received on this project. Staff recommends your commission approve Plan Development Review Number 19-0189 as depicted in the project description and subject to the listed mitigation conditions of approval. Also, I would note that there was a planning director's memo that was also added to this project. This concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. I was supposed to read this before. Basically, after the staff gives their report, those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and by presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way. So at this time, anybody that was here to support the project that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, identify yourself. All right. I see no one. Is anybody in opposition to the project here would like to speak? Please come to the microphone and identify yourself. All righty then. So I think I go on to the commissioners. This is a time to ask questions and inquire, but not render opinions. Yes? All right, then. Are any commissioners that would like to inquire? I don't have the little fancy button, so I don't know you guys.
I'm trying to decipher what I'm saying.
All right. Okay. Well, I have questions. I always have questions. I'm looking at this site plan, and I'm not clear on the, there was an addenda, or not addenda, but there was additional documents, memo, whatever, sent in today, which talked about the additional changes to the gas island and that kind of thing. But it talked about Phase 2 and Phase 3 plans, but I was not clear on the site plan, where the Phase 2 and the Phase, where the phasing is, at least the two sheets that I've seen. Does anybody like to address that? I saw a red dotted line thing, but that looked like something else, so I don't know what that is.
Vice Chair Coman, members of the commission, my name is Bo Lundie. On behalf of the applicant, I think I can answer your question. On the site plan itself that was submitted, on the lower right-hand side are cross-hatched sections of the phasing of the project. But basically, an explanation of Phase 1 would be the three pads fronting Hosking, including the pad directly behind the fast-food restaurant. I'm not exactly clear between Phase 2 and 3, but let's call Phase 2 the hotel, and then the remainder of the neighborhood portion of the development is Phase 3. I might have that backwards. Well, actually, I can...
Okay.
I got it backwards.
Okay. All right. You got it now?
You get it?
Yeah, I get it now. Thank you.
I have a larger site plan, if that will help, too.
I'm sorry?
I do have a larger site plan, if that will help.
No, I think I understand where you're doing that. Thank you. Right near the gas station, there's an existing sump, and it's like really small. So is that one of those sumps that we put in in the 80s that don't go anywhere? Looks like a sewer drain and just collects water? This is actually for Public Works, I think.
This irrigation line appears to go over to the existing sump through a storm drain system underneath Hosking Lane.
So that's a storm drain on the property, and that little line is the pipe going underneath the street to the existing sump across Hosking.
That's what appears to me, yes.
Okay, I was a little confused, because I was reading that as, sump is here, and that was that little box, so that must have been my misreading of the plan. Thank you for clarifying that. In the last proj, this is also to staff, in the last project that we approved, which was, I don't know the last project we approved, but when we approved the Stockdale and Buena Vista project, we had asked for additional landscaping around the gas island to, I think we had asked for that to raise that berm up and to plant larger trees. I guess I got to back up a minute and ask if this landscape plan is under the new guidelines?
Yes, I believe the new landscape requirements apply in this case. The condition that is added in the planning director's memo is the same condition that was taken from the Stockdale-Buena Vista project, where the Planning Commission decided that people of the city of Bakersfield did not need to be looking at a dirt patch for months while Phase 1 was being constructed. So we asked for fencing and/or landscaping, and we took that very same condition from the Stockdale-Buena Vista project, applied it to this project, and the applicant was fine with that condition.
I also don't see any turnouts on Hoskins or on Hughes for access. Do we require that? I got a driveway, but you don't have a turn-in lane, or what are you, is that what they call them? Yeah, decelerate lane, thank you. Are they not required in this case, or? Are they not required in this case, or...
Commissioner, yeah, there is one that's off the page here on my drawing. Upper-left corner of the site plan is a right turn in deceleration lane approaching Husk... Excuse me, approaching Hughes Lane, going eastbound on Hosking.
Is that what this lane is?
So the double-yellow line, I believe is a bike lane. Is that right?
Looks like a bike lane, yeah.
And then to the south of the bike lane is the lane for right turns. Let's see, double-yellow. Yeah, they got two.
And so this... That complies with all the city ordinances regarding those decelerating lanes?
Yes. Let's have... They do? All of them on Hughes Lane also?
Ryan Starbuck, Traffic Engineer, Public Works.
Thank you for coming today. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Along Hosking Road, yes, it requires the right turn deceleration lanes. That's what's shown. It's correct. That line is a double bike lane striping, and then to the south of that is that right turn deceleration lane going into the drive approach. The deceleration lane's 150 feet of storage with a 90-foot taper, which is our city standard. That's the only access approach along Hosking, other than at the intersection of Hughes. Hughes Lane is a collector roadway, so it does not require right turn deceleration lanes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The last item I had for staff was the pedestrian flow, and it may be just that we're looking at an eight-and-a-half-by-11 plan, and it's kind of hard to... I see where there's some access, because, you know, access for the handicap spots, but there doesn't seem to be, you know, walking... I don't know, Mr. Kader has a better term for it, but the pedestrian move about... What was that term? There was a term for it. I'm totally missing it right now, but...
Circulation?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see that really clearly spelled out here. I know it was mentioned in the documents, but it's not really shown on the site plan.
Commissioner, so it appears to me that they're using Hughes Lane for a lot of that pedestrian circulation, which typically, if this was one site not being split by a public way, you'd have to utilize your parking lot area to maneuver around. But in this case, they're utilizing the public way to accomplish a lot of that circulation for pedestrians.
Okay. And then all the trees and that kind of stuff will be shown on future plans that you have, which will include the parking lot trees and all that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Any other commissioners have questions? Okay. I think we can move on to a motion?
Close the hearing first, and then...
Okay, close the hearing, then discussion?
No, you could just ask for a motion, I think, unless you have extra comments.
All right. I will now close the public hearing portion, and... Commissioners have any comments? Yeah, you can speak your opinion now. Now we're on to the opinion part. Now we're on the right? Opinion part. I apologize for being... I just kind of got dropped on you at the last minute, so I apologize. Okay, so who wants to talk? Mr. Rudnick?
I think it's a great project. I think it's an awkward piece of land that's split, and I think the developer did a nice job with using that. My concern is the three-story hotel or motel, whatever it's going to be, overlooking the residential to the south. I would... I guess it would be south and west. And I think if I lived in those homes, I would have an issue with that, that someone's looking in my backyard. So that's my issue. I don't like that component of the plan.
Any other commissioners have comments? Ms. Lomas?
In our ordinances, are any... Is there anything that addresses this? We've got it from Ag... We've got requirements when you go from Ag to residential. Is there any requirements between a commercial piece, stories, and residential? Anything that our ordinances address?
What does all look for, one second?
Setbacks, that kind of thing?
Would you guys want to take a quick, just two-minute recess, so we can chat amongst ourselves, instead of just keeping waiting and bated breath?
Consider the meeting in...
Recession.
Recession, thank you.
...090. This condition affects any office, commercial, and industrial building, and any apartment or condominium structure containing three or more units that are within 150 feet of the property zoned R1, RS1A, MH, or PUD, or from condominium projects of a single-family character. Screening proposals must be approved by the Planning Division before building permits will be issued. Suggested methods for accomplishing screening are included in the referenced ordinance section. So they meet the building height, they meet the setback, and they meet the screening requirements, and it's conditioned in the application.
Yes. Okay, so I've got a question, staff. What... Explain to me how screening works on this. So what you're saying is the property line to the building is over 150 feet, or at least 150 feet?
No, I think we're saying that if it's within that range, they have to provide screening.
Okay.
And then there's a list within the muni code of what would be acceptable screening.
Okay. So screening means we're protecting the view of the... The people can't... I can't talk this evening. The people on the second and third floor cannot view the residential backyards because of the screening requirement that you're going to impose? Am I saying this correctly?
Yes, so just to read some examples, it's translucent glass, wing walls, no windows, balconies, or decks facing the affected residential property, landscaping, awnings. So the intent is to protect the privacy of the residential homes.
Okay. So we're in place, so we're protecting those folks?
Yes.
Perfect. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Does any commissioner wish to make a motion? Sorry?
I did it for Larry. I'll make that motion, and we'll need to incorporate the August 15 memorandum from Kevin Coyle.
Thank you.
Is that sufficient? So can we have a vote, please?
I'll second.
Oh, we need a second? All right then. And Mr. Wade is going to second it. Thank you. Now we can have a vote? All right, here we go. Thank you.
Motion passes with Chair Kader abstaining.
I bet as soon as I chime in, it'll fix again, but can... Oh, there we go. Except it left him not as abstaining anymore.
Thank you. All right, getting back to our agenda, do we need to get Mr. Kader back in here to...
Yes.
To... Does anybody know where he is? He's coming? Okay, thank you.
That's probably what it is. And we're back. All right, we are now moving on to communications. Mr. Coyle?
Yes, my first communication is a mea culpa, because I believe I had told the Planning Commission that I would give them an update on major projects happening in the city of Bakersfield. I do not have that report this evening. My second announcement is I will give that report at our next Planning Commission meeting, which is September 5th at 5:30 here in City Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Are there any commissioner comments or rebuttals to the comment? Just kidding. Oh, Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you for updating us on that review of previous projects, that we all noticed it wasn't on the agenda, so thanks for following up on that. I wanted to ask, and this is not my thing. Mr. Rudnick first mentioned it to me, and then Ms. Lomas clarified it to me last meeting. This has to do with these extensions of time on track maps that we're approving, that projects that were approved in 2005, 2006, 2007, prior to the state intervening, what their... The 10-year grant of time extensions. And the concern is that we're now being asked to give them three years' extension of time, and we've done that pretty much willy-nilly for the last year or so. But the question really is, on those projects that were approved in 2006, are the development fees set from 2006, or are they pay the current fees?
They're set from when the vesting tentative app was originally approved. So if it was 2006, you'd be correct. It's 2006 fees.
So the question is, do we have any... Is there anything that we can do about it, and is there anything that we want to do about it? And I guess I'm just asking that if we can have some discussion about that at a future meeting, if council and planning can weigh in on... Okay, I think there's a couple different issues there, and so that we can have some dialogue about it. I don't know if there's political will to change it. I don't know.
Well, I will tell you that at last night's city council meeting, city council actually made it easier for developers to take advantage of those fees by extending the vesting rights after you record from one year to two years. And so that's the first time we've done that, I think, since 2008. So I would speak to maybe your elected officials and see if that's a direction that they want to go before we start changing directions. And it's really a policy choice. It's not a staff-level choice on whether we would start denying these or being stricter on them.
So you're saying we should talk to the individual council people before we do any more here?
I mean, you don't have to. If you deny it, and then somebody appeals it to council, it'll end up there anyways. But I just want to... I'm just telling you, last night, I think they set the tone. They want to be developer-friendly, and then if we came in and were developer-unfriendly, it would just be mixed messages.
I don't think anybody wants to be developer-unfriendly, because we still want to be friendly to developers, but we also have, you know, we're leaving a lot of money on the table in a lot of cases, and we have a fiduciary duty to the city to at least have a discussion about it, so...
I agree with you, but like I said, it's not really a staff-level decision, but if Planning Commission wants to set that policy in tone, that's... The next extension that comes up, you guys can debate it and go from there. Commissioner Wade?
Just a quick comment about that. Alternatively, we can come up with a suggestion for city council, and they can choose to discard it or to apply it, and simultaneously, we can each be talking to our... The council members that appointed us. But I think for us to act as a think-tank for the council in terms of planning isn't a bad idea. For us to just to get together and talk about it, because we haven't... We've just been blindly renewing these. For us to just have a conversation specifically about this issue, I don't think it's going to hurt anybody. And it doesn't mean staff needs to give us some sort of concrete information where we make a ruling that's going to change things, but for us to make a suggestion after having a nice conversation about what we're doing and the direction we're going, isn't going to hurt anybody.
I agree with that, and I don't know if there will be extensions on the next agenda, but we can internally talk about how we could agendaize one of those to open dialogue.
I guess my question with that would be, I think that we're talking about a process here and not an individual applicant, and I think that it's unfair to say, "You, yes, you, yes, you, yes, no, come this way." And so I think, I mean, I...
Like a workshop type?
I think a workshop might be the right forum, just because I don't think that any of us would want to make an example out of one project when we've approved a dozen in the last three months.
And I don't want to just speak for everybody how it will be agendaized, but we, like I said, we'll talk internally and make sure something is agendaized appropriately for that.
Yeah, I think if you could discuss and report back. Thank you. And Commissioner Lomas would like to say something.
What I'd like to see specifically is math. So take an imaginary project with maps that have been extended six times, and what is that math? What are their current fees, and what would they be today? That would help me. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas, Commissioner Wade, and Commissioner Coleman, and staff. Are there any other commissioner comments before we adjourn? If not, I will move to adjourn the meeting at 6:20. Have a great evening.